People that may want to sign it need to hurry up. And we'll get those filed.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the meeting of City Council, January 23, 2023, our first meeting of the year. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Prue, could we have a roll call, a roll call of those present?
Councilmember Snow.
Here.
Hughes.
Here.
Wasniak.
Here.
Wilms.
Here.
Fowler.
Here.
Honchel.
Here.
Mayor Flynn.
Here.
I'd like to start by welcoming our new council members, Craig Honchel and Wendy Hughes, and also our new city clerk, Wanda Cruz. She's been very busy since we had quite a long agenda for our very first work session and meeting. First thing we'll do is have a citizen input session. You get three minutes to speak, and I'll call people in order. The first one is Don Sennett of 22 Brittany Lane.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to thank the council for all the work they did on the STR regulations. I also would encourage the council to permanently table what you have listed as unfinished business, since we already have a regulation you passed that's in tattling. Next, I'd like to address a bigger issue. Through all the discussion of the STRs, the issue of septics seem to be a continuing threat. It's as if we have a ticking time bomb of septic in our community that will eventually threaten our groundwater, the cleanliness of our streams and lakes, and the health of our neighborhoods. I would like to encourage the council to create a working group, perhaps chaired by Councilman Fowler, although I didn't ask him about this, with the express purpose of creating an ordinance to regulate the maintenance and inspection of septic systems throughout the community of Bella Vista. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Oscar Hanson of 9 Park Ridge Drive.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the council, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to express a concern about the ordinance for taking it from a resident single family to a C2 light commercial district, and it's on the petition rezoning of number 202246586. I walked that property today. I live facing that property in question. That property line does not stop at the wooded area. It goes into that wooded area approximately 15 feet. Also, I'd like to also recognize and state that with our homes facing that rezoning area that's being asked to be rezoned, for six months out of the year, there will be no leaves on trees, no shrubbery to protect us from the lights from anything that's a commercial district. That is a concern to us for our privacy. We bought our homes there, realizing that that property across the, from that, from us, was zoned as residential, and it was to be residential. Now, it is going to be, it's being asked to go to a C2. We have no idea what's going to be put in there. I hope the council does, but we don't. I mean, that's why we're objecting and really criticizing this decision to do that. And we really and truly hope that you will consider that in your decision here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Becky Van Meter of 18 Park Ridge Drive.
This is my very first meeting, and here I am speaking, and I promise to behave myself. So, thank you to the, like I said, it's my first time, so I'm looking forward to other meetings as well, so I can learn more about how this, this works. I'm here about the same issues that the former person just did about the selling of that property and or turning it into a commercial, C2, I believe it's C2. And I just, I have actually, I know that the, the guys from Cooper didn't get to speak last time, so I'm going to give them an opportunity to speak because I have questions for them. And that's, that's, that's where I'll start. What will Cooper do to ensure the privacy and safety of the impacted homeowners?
Ma'am, you need to direct your comments.
Oh, okay. I was, I was hoping that he, I would hope he has an opportunity to answer that, that question. And the safety is about the construction when they're, if they are going to be constructing a, and then the parking lot and the lighting. And I was wondering if there'd be a safety personnel, especially at night. Will Cooper maintain ownership of the property adjacent to Park Ridge Drive? There would be some comfort with a known entity if they're going to hang on to it. What is the plan for the trees that currently shelter homeowners' property? Because there were, there was always demolition of trees when there's, when there's something like this going on. And what is the plan for the trees that are adjacent to the cemetery? The cemetery is a sacred place, and we certainly don't want to take away any privacy from that. Where will the signage be located if the C2 zoning request is approved? I'd be interested in knowing that because I'm right next door to it. And the last thing that I have to say is the lack of detailed information has created much speculation and uncertainty among the homeowners. Please consider sharing at least high-level details about intentions for the property. Many chose the Park Ridge development as their retirement home and have fallen in love with the community. The Cooper family founders would be pleased with your kindness. That's it.
Thank you. Next speaker is first, I'm having trouble reading this name, first initial M, last name Lynn, at 5 Buckingham Drive.
Mark Orson, 5 Buckingham Drive. I apologize, John, it wasn't my strong suit, so. I'm here tonight to discuss a little bit about Resolution Q. There was some conversation last week in the work session that was brought up by Jerry discussing about conflict interest. I believe this is a conflict interest by appointing Linda Lloyd, and the reason is she's a current real estate broker in Northwest Arkansas. She has access to buyers and sellers, builders, planners, all kinds of stuff. So, the planning commission's responsibilities are large-scale developments, incidental subdivisions, plats, you can see where I'm going with this. I feel that any real estate agent, builder, or what have you shouldn't be in this position at all. Just a mere sense of improprieties is enough. So, that's how I feel about it. I think having someone in that position, they can be compromised very easily. They show developments or properties. I'm not saying she should do that, but people get in situations. I think you should reconsider that, that position to somebody else or keep it vacant. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker is Tom Judson from 36 Kintyre Lane.
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of the POA. We have four rezoning requests in front of you, all of them to C1. We're trying to match the historical use of all four of those properties with the correct zoning. Unfortunately, you're going to see a lot of me over the next several months because we found 20 different parcels that were zoned incorrectly way back when the city was created. So, our intent is to just get it, all those parcels, to match the historical usage of those properties. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mark Huber of number 7 Park Ridge.
Hi. Mr. Mayor and members of City Council, thank you for allowing us to speak. My wife and I live at number 7 Park Ridge. I owned that property for about nine years, and my wife could give you the exact dates I can. Prior to moving to Bella Vista, I served on City Council for 10 years. I understand the importance of trusting your city's committees and their commissions. They are your boots on the ground. They've spent a great deal of time and effort speaking to the residents of Highland Park Villas. We are the only community directly affected by the rezoning at Lancastershire and Buckstone. They evaluated the wants and the needs of the city. They took into consideration our changing demographics and the need for additional housing. They made a determination that the city would be best served in the future if the parcel in question remained as it was first zoned, and that it was zoned residential. I urge you, and we urge you, not to impede, void, or negate their hard work and deny this current appeal of their decision. Thank you for your time and your service to our wonderful city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jim Parsons of 29 Duval Lane.
I am Jim Parsons, and I'm chairman of the Bella Vista Patriots, live on Lake Avalon. And as you know, the Architectural Control Committee has ordered us to take our white fences down, and we feel like that that is unreasonable, it's arbitrary, and it's capricious, and we want to fight that. We just feel like that what the heck is wrong with a white fence? There are white fences all around the world. We'd be the only city probably in the world that don't have white fences and have a ban on it. So, I went to the Attorney General, and she said that there are no laws that she could hang her hat on to make an opinion. So, I went to the Benton County Circuit Court, and Judge Scott said that there are no laws regulating a 501(c)(4) like ACC, and they could pretty well do whatever they want. And they can fine you and charge you fees and sell permits to you, and they can raise the price any way they want to, and you have no recourse, and you have no way to do anything about it. So, the Bella Vista Patriots are going to rent a bus, and we're going to, next month, go to the City Council Governmental Affairs Committee, and we're going to try to lobby to have some laws so that these entities will have something to hang their hat on. And this is what we did in 2005, and it got you your job. And where you are right now is what we did in the Patriots loading a bus and lobbied the legislature to make it possible for Bella Vista to become a city. We are a city now, and we have city ordinances, and that should take care of anything that the people want, not what Cooper wants. I thank you for your service and things you do, and appreciate your letting us speak tonight. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jim Waters of 4 Bright Lane.
I'd like to thank the City Council and the members for hearing me tonight. My topic is rezoning petition number 2022-46586, which is off of, by the cemetery. And I request that since, the world has changed since this original planning was done, how that was going to be zoned, future planning, I request that we table any rezoning until the future plan can be reviewed, and anything that's planned for that zoning be shared at a high level with the community, and you have open forums so they can hear what you're really planning for. Because I feel at this point, there's a lot of people upset because they don't know. I think if you would open that up, it might keep, make things a lot easier for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Gene Grosscloves of Cooper Communities.
Good evening. I'm Gene Grosscloves. I represent Cooper Communities. I don't have a lot to add to the appeal. The appeal speaks for itself. I'm sure all of you've reviewed it. I would like to reiterate that this is an appeal, and it is a new hearing, not based upon a planning committee vote, whether it's for or against. And we, we just are attempting at this point to bring our zoning in line with the comprehensive plan. I know that when planning, when Taylor, with planning presents her information to you, you can clearly see that it's merely bringing this piece of property within the comprehensive plan the council's already passed. I know there's a lot of concern by the neighbors as far as the development of the property. Again, this is not concerning the development. This hearing is not. It's simply bringing us in line with the comprehensive plan. The development process will have an entirely new process where community input and community concerns can be when there is a specific plan for the development. At this point in time, there is not a specific plan for the development, merely attempting to bring it in line with the comprehensive plan. So, we ask that you consider this carefully. We do ask for approval of this rezone, and appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Roberta Caroline of 19 Park Ridge Drive. Apologize if I got that last name wrong.
You were close.
Yeah, I think you all can hear me. I just have one point I would like to raise in terms of the rezoning for the area that we've all been discussing. One of the things a lot of people don't realize, they say there's a big ravine there, lots of trees, you can't see anything. Well, that's true, except if you live on Park Ridge, you realize the ravine starts up here on the other side, and we're down here. So, any traffic, any lights shine directly down into your homes and into your bedrooms, or at least that's where the car lights that go by. So, it's a real concern to us that the amount of traffic that would come down that road in the evening, if you have a business that stops at 5:00, it's not quite a problem. But if you have apartment houses or something else, then we've got a real issue for our area, and noise just travels across that ravine. I would like to compliment Cooper on the foresight to develop 150 Home, Homeowners' Association. There isn't any such thing as that anywhere, and it's really, really nice. And for the city to have that as a model, you need to protect it. People love that area. They see what it's like, they see what it is for the elderly, and like I said, I think you all should be proud of it, and I thank Cooper for coming up with that design and model. Let's keep it that way. Thank you.
Next speaker is Beverly, I can't make out the last name, of 12 Park Ridge.
Thank you for hearing me. My name is Beverly Phillips, and I've lived at 12 Park Ridge Drive since 2014, and as Roberta said, there are 157 homes in Highland Park Homeowners' Association, 35 of which are on Park Ridge. Currently, 67 widows reside in our community, with eight residing on Park Ridge. I am one of the eight. We make up 42% ownership of the homes. If you ask people why they chose this location, they will tell you ease of living as we age and reality that eventually the one left behind will be left in a safe and secure place. Rezoning to C2, which covers a wide spectrum with no knowledge of what is planned, is a huge threat to our security. I ask you, the council, if your quality of life and your home's values were in this situation, to think about how you would respond. Cooper Communities, who once found the home at 1 Park Ridge, a premier location for their model home, now wants to rezon the back of 1, 3, and 5 Park Ridge to an unknown entity. What we do know is any commercial entity comes with parking lots, back doors, parked cars, traffic in and out, people hanging out, dumpsters emptied in the wee hours, overhead lighting invading the homes all night, and an unknown element coming into our community, possibly threatening the safety of our elderly. What do you think this does to the possibility of selling our homes and our property values? Once rezoned, it will be no problem to rezon the rest of the property down to the Bella Vista Cemetery, and how it might interfere with its historical Civil War section, not to mention those who find peace and solitude in visiting their loved ones who have passed. Cooper Communities rebuttal says the parcel is protected from nearby residential areas by a large timberland buffer. In the last two meetings we have attended, there has been a dispute. First, the 500 feet off of the property line of House Number 1 to 250 feet. Last meeting, when challenged, it was down to 150 or 125 feet. We have the right to know exactly. Walking lot number 1, I believe you will see that all the trees on the two acres will, will need to be removed, which comes to the ravine, as Roberta had mentioned. And yes, there are trees at the bottom, but they do not come up high enough to block any vision of a commercial building from their backyard or inside their home. I encourage you to walk the property and ask yourself if there are accusations that residents were misleading or lacked basis in fact is true. There is a continuing interest in making Bella Vista a destination location with an emphasis on a safe place to live and enjoy the outdoors.
Your three minutes is up, sorry. Thank you very much. Next person is Larry Kelly of Holler Lane.
Good evening. So, I wasn't, I've been at a number of City Council meetings recently, and I wasn't able to make the work session last time. And I'll admit that I haven't had time to look at the, the recording of that, but someone was telling me that a conversation sprung up about eliminating public comment. No? Was that incorrect? And, and that concerned me, so I'm going to go ahead and talk about it. That concerned me because, I mean, as we're seeing right here, that's an important part of communication from the people that are electing the officials in governing. So, I think that's important. I would, I would hate it if that ever happened, because I'd understood that it is something that other municipalities don't necessarily allow or have a provision for, but I would really hate that to happen in Bella Vista, because I think it's the public square. This is where we come to dissent, to share our, our opinions. Thank you, Mr. Wilms. This is where we get an opportunity to share those things. And, and so, as the public square, I think we should have the opportunity to do so, unimpeded. And so, please, don't consider that. I hope it doesn't get any legs.
The next speaker is Timothy Ainge of 5 Park Ridge Drive.
Eaton Mayor, City Council, thanks for having us. I assume that everybody has looked, read, reviewed the appeal from CCI Industries to the council, and it's really based, it was said that it had nothing to do with the planning commission, but if you read it, it does have something to do with the planning. Commission, but if you read it, it does have something to do with the Planning Commission. It starts out that Cooper, in their appeals, state that the Planning Commission denial is arbitrary, capricious, and unreasonable. I think it's fair to ask, what is unreasonable about a no vote? What is capricious about a no vote? What is arbitrary about a no vote? Nothing. And I find the use of the word "capricious" interesting. The definition of that is "capricious," gives to sudden and unacceptable changes in mood behavior. None of that was exhibited at the Planning Commission meeting I attended. That is far from the truth. So I think, or I wonder, if Cooper Industries is trying to buffalo the Planning Commission, as well as maybe the city council. So I encourage you to read and study that appeal that they sent to you, because I think there's a lot of innuendos in there that are not true. I, for one, am not eager to have a commercial building 30 or 50 feet from my back property, and I don't think any one of you are either, because you don't know what it's gonna bring. It's the uncertainties of what's there. So I ask you to please consider voting no on this, in light of the citizens of Belavista, in light of the people who support you and expect you in turn to support us. We can't do it by ourselves, it's up to you. But I found some things in that appeal that it's like poor old Cooper, and I don't like people saying that, well, something was mis-zoned from the beginning. What's that mean? What's mis-zoned from the beginning? It really probably constitutes nothing. There wasn't any choices, maybe. Nevertheless, I please ask you to consider this thoughtfully, considerately, not just for you, but for the citizens that live in that neighborhood. Thank you.
Next speaker is Larry Winter of 1 Park Ridge Drive.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council, I'm Larry Winter, 1 Park Ridge Drive. I am the closest one to the possible rezoning area. First off, Tim covered the arbitrary, capricious, and unreasonable, and if I was on the Planning Commission, I would be very angry.
Yes.
Secondly, Cooper did have representatives at that meeting.
Yes, they do.
Now, in terms of the amount of forest protection, I have a picture showing the back of my home, Number 1, and Number 3, King's Home. Surveyors put pins or stakes at the corners of their property as a surveyant. This picture shows a pin and what I consider a stake at the end of the P-H-O-A property, and I measured that today at 31 feet. And I request that you vote no and support the Planning Commission, I'll pass this picture around.
Thank you, and good evening.
Thank you. Okay, we are now at this point of the meeting for council member reply. Someone would like to reply to any or all of these, again?
I'd like to thank everyone for speaking tonight. Mr. Kelly, just for clarification, the discussion was about removing or continuing or not council reply to public comment. So public comment, in my mind, will never leave. It's a discussion about if we should have council reply or not, and I've heard a lot of feedback about it, and it's been really great to learn what the public wants. Also, and I'll be available after the meeting if anyone wants to talk, and we can exchange information as to the meeting time.
Thank you. Okay, I guess we're set then on council reply. Action on the minutes. We are dealing with the minutes from December 19, 2022, regular meeting. Does anybody have any corrections, or if not, is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Second. That was Councilman Fowler and Councilman Wills. Okay, all in favor of approving?
Mayor, we need to call the roll.
Oh, a roll call?
And so one thing I just, I haven't said it, just for benefit of everyone, I think it will be helpful, and actually is according to the rule, to restate the question and then call for the roll, so as the chair said, the question is on the adoption of the minutes.
Oh, okay. Sorry. The question is on the adoption of the minutes of the regular meeting, December 19, 2022.
Councilmember Hansel?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed, six to zero. Next item is financial reports. The November financials were sent to the council members under separate cover. The financial reports are available on the city's website, and I believe we put a few copies there if anyone's interested. This is for the time period ending, I just wanna make a couple observations about it. For the time period ending November 30, 2022, compared to the prior year, the general fund operating revenues were up $1 million. The city tax was up 13%. Property tax is up 14.9%. So the city's in excellent financial shape and has a very good reserve of funds. So we feel like we're in strong shape right now, and we purposely have been playing it conservative, and I give the prior mayor, Peter Christie, kudos for that, because of the danger of a recession in the upcoming year. Majority economists seem to believe there'd be a recession this year, and we feel like we're in good shape to weather it if it should occur. Next item on the agenda is election of a mayor pro temp.
Mayor, if I could just, we have a little bit different procedure, and so I'll just remind the council of the rule on this, we talked about it before, send an email to you, but just for the benefit of everyone. The count, this is from your rule. The city council shall at the time of organizing a public session, elect one of its members as mayor pro temp for it. Any council member may nominate himself or any other member of the city council for mayor pro temp, and no second of a nomination is required. Each city councils, each city, excuse me, each council member shall vote by naming his choice by voice vote, if there is more than one nominee for a position. A majority vote of the city council shall be required for election. So you can nominate yourself or another person, no second is required, and if we get more than one, then we'll have a vote by name.
Larry?
I would make a motion to nominate Doug Fowler as mayor pro temp this year.
Okay.
Motion to nominate myself as mayor pro temp for the session.
Any other nominations? Okay, I think we can proceed with the roll call vote then.
So the response will either be Fowler or Hughes.
Council, Council Hansel?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Hughes. Hughes? Fowler?
Fowler.
Wozniak?
Fowler.
Snow?
I'll vote for Ms. Hughes.
Four for Fowler and two for Hughes, Mayor.
Okay, so Mr. Fowler is elected mayor pro temp. At this point, I'd like to entertain a motion to suspend the rules of order and procedure to allow all ordinances on the agenda to be read by title only.
Question to approve.
Second.
That's a motion by Mr. Fowler, second by Ms. Hughes.
Questions on suspension of the rules.
Roll call vote. Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Okay, on unfinished business, an ordinance regulating short-term rentals to provide the requirement of a permit to operate a short-term rental, to provide for a maximum number of short-term rental permits to be issued, to provide occupancy limits for short-term rentals, to provide a process for revocation of a short-term rental permit, providing penalties for violations and for other purposes. And this was tabled from the October meeting. In light of the fact that we had passed another ordinance on this matter, I'd like to see a motion to table it indefinitely.
So move. Second.
That's motion by Mr. Wills, second by Mr. Snow. Roll call vote.
Hansel?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. On our ordinance Number B, under unfinished business, regulating short-term rentals to provide the requirement of a permit to operate a short-term rental, to provide for a maximum number of short-term rental permits to be issued, to provide occupancy limits for short-term rentals, to provide a process for revocation of a short-term rental permit, providing penalties for violations and for other purposes. This was also tabled from the October meeting, so I think it would be prudent to have a motion to table it indefinitely.
So move. Second.
That was a motion by Wozniak, and a second by Mr. Fowler.
Council? Fowler?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Okay, under new business, Number C, an ordinance setting the amount of additional fine to be levied pursuant to Arkansas Code annotated, Section 16-17-129, to defray the cost of incarcerating city prisoners and for other purposes.
Mayor, I can answer any questions about this, we spoke about this at the work session. Chief Graves is here. This increases what is collected from violators, from $15 to $20 as a jail fee, and we use that money, it can only be used for defraying the cost that we pay to the county, to house prisoners. So that's what this is for, this is as most as it can be by state statute, and still not gonna meet our expense, according to Chief Graves, who I believe is here somewhere, I think I saw him, I'm sure he can get more specifics for you, but that's what this is about.
Mr. Wills?
I have a question, how do we levy that against a particular individual?
I can answer that. So when they plead guilty or are found guilty, the judge levies it against them with the other costs and fines in the case.
So you determine the number of days by?
No. No, each person, for each offense they're convicted of pays that fee, whether they're going to jail or not. This is collected from every person.
So they only pay $20 then?
Per charge.
Okay.
Per charge. And then that money, even though that person may not be going to jail, we collect it on speeding, every offense that we have over here, speeding and stop signs and headlights and everything. And so then, so they pay that, and we put all that in a fund, and that's used to defray the cost of prisoners that are arrested by the sheriff's, by the police department that have to be taken to the jail.
So it's not an overnight fee that we get charged, this is a?
No, what you pay, what the city pays to incarcerate prisoners is an entirely different agreement and amount, and that's an agreement that the city has with the sheriff's office. And so this is a collection mechanism to recoup funds, does not directly relate to what we pay, because we're already not paying, we're not, we can't collect enough to reimburse ourselves for all the cost.
Big question.
Make a motion to be approved.
Second. That's out of order, because this is first reading, so there would need to be a motion to suspend the rules and go to a third and final reading, if you wish to move forward tonight.
I'll make a motion to suspend rules and go to third and final.
That was a motion by Doug Fowler, and a second by Frank Hansel. So this would be a vote to suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Mayor, we need to go ahead and read the title again, that'll be the third reading.
Okay. Setting the amount of additional fine to be levied pursuant to Arkansas Code annotated 16-17-129, to defray the cost of incarcerating city prisoners and for other purposes. Is there a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve. Second.
That was a motion by Doug Fowler, second by Mr. Wozniak. Okay, roll call vote.
Councilman Hansel?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next matter is ordinance, amending ordinance Number 2022-18, regarding the regulation of short-term rentals, to remove the requirement that an address of the property owner and local point of contact be posted inside the short-term rental.
Motion to go to the third and final?
Suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules?
And go to third and final.
And then go to third and final.
Second.
That was a motion by Ms. Hughes, and a second by Doug Fowler.
Council Wozniak?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Carried, six to zero. I'm gonna read the third and final now. Amending ordinance Number 2022-18, regarding the regulation of short-term rentals, to remove the requirement that an address of the property owner and local point of contact be posted inside the short-term rental.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Doug Fowler, and a second by Mr. Wozniak.
Council Snow?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried, six to zero. Next ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with Superior Automotive Group in the total amount of $47,267 for the purchase of one 2023 Chevrolet Tahoe police vehicle for use by the police. Tahoe police vehicle for use by the police department. Chief, for the audience's benefit, might be good if you spoke on this for a minute.
Sure. Normally, every year in the past, the state would go out to bid and get a state bid contract for police vehicles, for all state vehicles the state was going to purchase. Since COVID and supply chain issues, the state's no longer getting a state bid for police vehicles specifically. So I'm asking for a bid waiver to purchase this police Tahoe. It's not, we're going to use Superior Automotive because they have a supply of them. Police vehicles aren't like normal vehicles that come with some pre-wiring in them for the police life and some other amenities that normal vehicles don't come with. Dealerships have to order these vehicles now six, eight months in advance. Superior took an order from us that we weren't held to legally because they knew because it had to be approved by counsel, but they asked how many vehicles I thought I'd need, they purchased them ahead of time. So to go out to bid for a vehicle would be worthless because nobody would have a separate Superior Automotive inside of its springs. So I'm asking for a bid waiver to purchase this vehicle this time. It's still a very good price. They give us about a five thousand, about five thousand five hundred dollar discount as a city compared to what the normal public would even start to begin to pay.
And I assume we may want to go to third and final on this also.
I would like that, so we can.
I'd like to make a motion to go to third and final.
Second.
Suspend the rules.
That was a motion by Doug Fowler and a second by Craig Hanschel. Sorry, sorry.
Sorry.
It's closed.
Counsel, Fowler?
Yes.
Wilmz?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Hanschel?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. That was a motion to go to the third and final. Now I'll read the third and final. Waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with Superior Automotive Group in the total amount of forty-seven thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars for the purchase of one twenty-two-three Chevrolet Tahoe police vehicle for use by the police department.
President Mayor, may I? Before we move to the vote, I'd just like the audience to know, and that I should, maybe this is to the council too, that all these agenda items, we covered off, we talked about it at a work session in detail. So a lot of this would just be reiteration if we did, so it's kind of like watching paint dry right now, I know. And also, just as a secondary point, these purchases are all approved in the city budget for 2023 and prior, so we've already, not only did we talk about it last week, we talked about it during the budgeting process also, so just as an FYI. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
That was a motion by Doug Fowler and second by, is that?
Take your choice.
Jim Wasniak?
Counsel, Wasniak?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Hanschel?
Yes.
Wilmz?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Motion carried.
A motion carried, that's six to zero. Next ordinance is amending the Bellevista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number twenty-two-two-four-six-nine-nine-six, county parcel number sixteen dash two-six-three-five-four dash zero-zero-zero, from P-one Conservation District to R-one Residential Single Family District, and the staff request move to third and final reading. Is Taylor here? Did you want to just mention what this property covers?
Okay, so this one's for State, Rillington Drive. It's a parcel that is on the east side of the city. I don't really have anything new to add from the work session. The applicant may be here tonight, I haven't seen her. Okay, she's here if you guys have any further questions for her, but they're requesting R-one Single Family Home. I've got nothing new since the work session, and it'd be great if we could do a third and final, since I had no questions at the work session.
Okay.
My also work session, we've forediscovered that it was on P-one, the construction of the home was what, like ninety percent complete or something like that, so, yeah. So I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules, go to third and final.
Second.
That was Mr. Fowler and second by Mr. Wasniak.
Counsel, Snow?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hanschel?
Yes.
Wilmz?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. I'm going to read it for the third and final now. Amending the Bellevista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number twenty-two-two-four-six-nine-nine-six, county parcel number sixteen dash two-six-three-five-four dash zero-zero-zero, from P-one Conservation District to R-one Residential Single Family District.
Motion to approve.
Second.
That was Mr. Fowler and? Mr. Wilmz.
Counsel, Fowler?
Yes.
Wilmz?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Hanschel?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Okay, that passed six to zero. Next one is ordinance amending the Bellevista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in zoning petition number twenty-two-two-four-six-nine-one-nine, county parcel number sixteen dash seven-oh-two-oh-one dash zero-zero-one, from P-one Conservation District to C-one Neighborhood Commercial District, and this is also the staff has requested third and final reading.
Let me ask a silly question. Is this the one that's in big?
Papa Mike's.
In contrast with the audience tonight, is this the one or not?
This is Papa Mike's.
Okay. Hi.
This is Scottsdale Pub House.
Got it.
Oh, okay. Scottsdale Pub House.
Motion to approve, motion to move to the third and final.
Okay. A motion by Mr. Wilmz and a second by Craig Hanschel.
Counsel, Wilmz?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hanschel?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero, so I'm going to read it for the third and final. Amending the Bellevista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number twenty-two-two-four-six-nine-one-nine, county parcel number sixteen dash seven-oh-two-oh-one dash oh-oh-one, from P-one Conservation District to C-one Neighborhood Commercial District. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Craig Hanschel and second by Doug Fowler.
Counsel? Hughes?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Hanschel?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wilmz?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next ordinance is amending the Bellevista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number twenty-two-two-four-six-nine-one-seven, county parcel number sixteen dash seven-oh-two-six-five dash zero-zero-one, from P-one Conservation District to C-one Neighborhood Commercial District. Which one is this, Taylor?
This is Lake Avalon Beach.
Oh, okay, this is Lake Avalon Beach, yeah.
I have a motion to amend. And it was passed out to all of you, and the motion to amend is to remove all references in the title.
No, that's the wrong one. It's the, it's the one in full. It's to replace with what you've got here.
It's a revised ordinance before you, along with a revised legal description. At the work session, I spoke about asking to remove the lands outside the roadway opposite the beach area and use those as, as, if you will, fringe areas for the adjacent residential properties as a buffer. And so the motion here is adding section two, which refers to a revised Exhibit A. Exhibit A is the legal description for the property being rezoned, which includes the Avalon Beach area, but less and except that portion lying north of the center line of Lancaster Drive. Most zoning runs along the center line of a road or highway, and so that's the reference here, is so that all of the area north of Lancaster and west of Lancaster, as it goes out to Camden, would be not rezoned, that would remain as it is today, as P-one. So that's the motion to amend.
Okay.
I would move to.
Can we have some conversation first? There needs to be a second.
Yeah, I think we need a second.
A second, okay. Before we do anything.
Second.
Okay, that was a motion by Larry Wilmz and a second by Ms. Hughes.
Now you can have debate on the motion, on the amendment motion.
Yeah, go ahead, Doug.
Yeah, no, so Counselor Wilmz, I, you know, respect your opinion, you know, on this. I, but I did, I, when you brought it up at the work session, you know, I made sure to drive over and look at it really closely, and I just don't really think it's necessary. I looked at the land in question, you know, the land that borders, what is that? Camden Road? I mean, I don't, I don't see how anything, I mean, something could be built there, but I just don't see why it would. It's kind of wasteland. And then the land on the north side, all along Lancaster, you know, there's a big ravine there behind the home, and then it kind of goes back at an angle and then dips back down, you know, almost, you know, to the road that comes down parallel, coming down from the north. And I don't know that, now, let me ask you this question. Does, is a resurvey of this land required? Does it cost the person to? Does it cost anything? You could just do it.
It's not required based on the legal description presented here attached, so.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. But I just don't think it's necessary personally, so, and that's just my opinion. I just don't think the land is really going to be developed at any point in the future.
Yes, Larry.
I guess the rationale that I had to suggest that we accept the areas north of Lancaster and west of Lancaster next to Camden was that the total parcel size is about twelve-point-two acres, and the areas of the portions outside of Lancaster, adjacent to subdivisions on Bradford Drive and on Knighton Drive, are fairly substantial in acreage. It's obviously, if you look at it, probably one to two acres at least apiece, maybe more, and it allows other uses if we rezonate to commercial, that's in the purview of our zoning code. So the property owner could come in and request a use consistent with the district code that it would be zoned, and the planning commission would need to address that and actually would have to approve it in some form. Granted, that may require screening or other things to be done as a part of that development, but I'm thinking that appropriately, this would be best left undisturbed from its current character in the interest of the property owners adjacent.
Okay, if there's no one else, I think we can go ahead and vote. The vote would be on the proposed amendment by Mr. Wilmz to accept the property north of Lancaster Drive.
Counsel, Snow?
Yes.
Hanschel?
No.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
No.
Wilmz?
Yes.
Fowler?
Fowler. Mayor, you may choose to vote in favor if you so desire. It is a tie vote.
I choose not to vote.
All right, so that motion would fail. Three to three. Still on first reading.
Yeah.
I would, Mr.?
Yes.
Mayor, I would offer to move this ahead and go to third and final in its current form.
Suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules and go to third and final at this time.
Second.
That was Mr. Wilmz and Mr. Fowler. This is on the vote to go to third and final.
Counsel, Wilmz?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Hanschel?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Carried six to zero, so I'll read it for the third and final. Amending the Bellevista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number twenty-two-two-four-six-nine-one-seven, county parcel number sixteen dash seven-oh-two-six-five dash zero-zero-one, from P-one Conservation District to C-one Neighborhood Commercial District.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Hanschel and a second by Doug Fowler.
No, this is, this is still.
Okay.
It's all in one.
Sorry.
It's all right.
Counsel, Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Wilmz?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hanschel?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next ordinance is amending the Bellevista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number twenty-two-two-four-six-five-eight-six, county parcel number sixteen dash four-oh-two-three-four dash zero-zero-one, from R-one Residential Single Family District to C-two Light Commercial District.
This is the time, this is the one that goes with that?
Okay. On this one, I would offer an amendment, Mr. Mayor, that we amend this ordinance to remove all references in the title and in section one of the proposed ordinance that's made to C-two Light Commercial District and replace it with C-one Neighborhood Commercial District in both. In preparation of our zoning map way back in about 2011 or 14, I'm not sure which exactly it was done, there were a lot of things that were not fully considered in keeping with the parcel locations and type. There are subdivision plats that have outlots in them that we've addressed with requests by the developer to rezonate them to residential from existing P-one zoning or to a commercial classification in some cases. What we have is a situation here where arbitrarily, the R-one zoning was selected for the adjacent vacant land south of the cemetery on Buxton Drive. The C-one zoning provides more restrictions for development than does the C-two category, and I would move in this, move to amend the ordinance as I've specified for the interest of protecting the property owners there and providing more control by the city of any development that would occur. and providing more control by the city of any development that would occur.
Is there a second?
Second.
So that was a motion by Mr. Wilmes, second by Doug Fowler. Any further discussion?
This is on the amendment only at this point.
Okay, I guess roll call vote.
Okay, Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Honchel?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Uh, motion carried six to zero.
Still on first reading.
Yes. Mr. Kelly, could you, could you speak to the consideration given to zoning by a city council?
Well, there's, there's a lot there. So I have presented, presented you in the past with a memo. And there's, there's a lot of things you can consider when it comes to whether to rezon. Compatibility with master plan. You can look at traffic. You can look at lighting. You can look at noise problems. You can look at utility issues. Look at sound and noise issues. So you can look at all those things. One of the things you can't do, one of the things you need to do is look at potential rezoning. And you have the schedule of uses in your code that say, if it's C2, it can be all these things. If it's C1, it can be all these things. And when it comes time for rezoning, it's not a time to, to really know what specifically could occur. You know that anything in that list could occur. So you need to look at, at all those uses and make sure that you can deal with the fact that whatever any of those uses may bring are not, you know, that meets those criteria that you can look at. So that, I mean, there's, there's more detail to it. And, but those are the sorts of things you look at.
Right. Yeah, I just wanted, because I generally use send that memo out, you know, when there's a rezon that could be debatable, right? What I'd like to do on this one is kind of take a step back from it. So you could, people would have an opportunity to review what C1 zoning is versus C2. From just a personal standpoint, I'd like people to know that I did go to the property. I did get out of my vehicle. I did walk it. I still have a few scratches from the brambles, you know, from being able to do that. I tried to walk to the back of the property and see where the, you know, the boundary stakes were placed. And I didn't see any when I, they were maybe up closer to the road. But I'd like an opportunity just to review it additionally myself. And, and you know, any resident would like to have a conversation about it. You know, feel free to contact me and, and I'll be more than happy to do that. But anyway, I'd like to take a step back because I said this is a first reading and we can still go through two more past this, so...
Anybody else? Yes?
I guess for the public's benefit, any property owner is, is permitted to submit an application to rezon their property, assuming, assuming that it's not designated for some purpose that can't be rezoned. As an example, a platted residential lot in Belavista is designated as residential. We've, we've chosen to call those R1 zoning, meaning single-family residential sites. Anyone can come in that owns a vacant lot and they could ask if it's on a corner of a busy street. They could say, well, I'd like to rezon that lot to C1. And so while it's a valid request, the reality is, is that the covenants restrict the use of the planted residential lots to be resident, single-family only. And that if we were to rezon that in the response to the owner, it would make the lot basically useless in value. Because the covenants would not allow commercial development to be put there, even though legally the city could rezon it to C1. But it would be a disservice to the property owner to do that. So you have to look at what the covenants say, what's been plotted as single-family or otherwise in the city when you take into consideration a petition to rezon. And so in this case here, we think that the appropriate usage is commercial along here per our adopted comprehensive plan in keeping with the residents and their concern about impacts. Making it C1 instead of C2 does at least in one step do that. Requires additional approvals and limits to development.
Anybody else? Okay.
So Mayor will go on to second reading next month if there's nothing further on that?
Yes, okay. Next matter is an ordinance amending the Belavista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2022-46916, county parcel number 16-03464-002, from R1 Residential Single Family District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. And the staff request moving to third and final on this one also. Taylor, which one is this? What?
This is the one with Paul Maitland and Alex Kingfield.
Oh, okay. So is there a motion to go to third and final?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, suspend the rules, go to third and final.
Is there a second?
Second.
So that was a motion by Doug Fowler, a second by Craig Honchel.
Council Hughes?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Honchel?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Uh, motion passed, six to zero. I'll read the third and final now. Amending the Belavista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2022-46916, county parcel number 16-03464-002, from R1 Residential Single Family District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Craig Honchel, second by Doug Fowler.
Council Fowler?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Honchel?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Snow?
Okay, motion carried six to zero. Next ordinance is amending the Belavista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2022-46918, county parcel number 16-43419-000, from R1 Residential Single Family District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. And staff request third and final reading. Which one is this, Taylor?
This is the Tanya Golf Range and merchandise there.
I'd like to make a motion, suspend the rules, go to third and final.
Second.
Motion by Doug Fowler, second by Larry Wilmes. Motion to go to third and final.
Council Wilmes?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wilm, Wilmes?
Yes.
And Honchel?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. I'll now read it for the third and final. Amending the Belavista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2022-46918, county parcel number 16-43419-000, from R1 Residential Single Family District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Larry Wilmes, second by Doug Fowler.
Council Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Honchel?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next item is a resolution expressing support and participation of the City of Belavista in the federal advance effect of accountable policing and criminal justice practices to enhance public trust and public safety program. And if you recall from the work session, Chief Graves described this as the so-called LSO program that we've been involved in with the federal government, where they give us free equipment from time to time, excess equipment that they have. Any discussion? Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I guess for clarification, Chief, I think, I think as you told us at the work session, this will not compromise our ability to obtain surplus equipment at any time or the disposal of that should we find that we don't need it after we own it.
No, all this does is just every year with a new executive order, the city council has to affirm their willingness to participate in the program. We can discontinue at any time as a city. Non-control items, we can dispose of in a year's time if we, you know, we don't need them any longer.
So what you're saying is that this will be an annual event, this resolution?
Yes, as long as this executive order is in, in power, I guess.
Motion to approve by Mr. Wilmes, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Jim Wasniak. So this is a vote on a motion to approve resolution.
Council Wilmes?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Honchel?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with emergency vehicle specialists pursuant to an HGAC cooperative purchasing agreement for the purchase of 12 self-contained breathing apparatuses and associated equipment in amount not to exceed $94,770.41 for use by the fire department. So this is equipment the fire department uses in fighting fires and it's replacing existing equipment that, as I recall, is quite old, maybe 2000, I want to say 2005 era, something like that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wasniak, second by Mr. Wilmes.
Council Snow?
Yes.
Honchel?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Hughes?
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution approving the mayor's reappointment of Wade Hagan for a three-year term in position one of the Belavista Board of Construction Appeals commencing January 1, 2023. So Mr. Hagan has been on the board and has expressed a willingness to serve for another three-year term.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Craig Honchel, second by Doug Fowler.
Council Wilmes?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Honchel?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one's a resolution awarding bid and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Reliable Chevrolet of Springfield, Missouri in the total amount of $45,500 for the purchase of one Chevrolet Silverado 1500 four-by-four work truck for use by the street department.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jerry Snow and second by Jim Wasniak.
Council Hughes?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Honchel?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution appointing Wendy Hughes to the Belavista Advertising and Promotion Commission as a council member commissioner in place of John Flynn, who is resigning.
Yeah, so just quickly, typically, the Advertising Promotion Commission would develop a list of prospects, you know, to fill an open seat. In this particular case, though, that's not our responsibility. We have seven commission members on the Advertising Promotion Commission, otherwise known as Discover Belavista. Whenever John resigned, we are required to have either a mayor, the mayor and a council member, or two council members. So in this particular case, it's a city council member that's required. And that would come from approval of the city council and not a recommendation of the Advertising Promotion Commission.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
That was motion by Doug Fowler and was that, was second by?
Mr. Wasniak.
Wasniak, okay.
Council Hughes?
Yes.
Honchel?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution approving the mayor's appointment of Linda Lloyd to the Belavista Planning Commission to complete the unexpired term of Craig Honchel due to his election to the city council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wasniak, second by Larry Wilmes.
Council Wilmes?
Yes.
Snow?
Want to abstain?
Hughes?
Yes.
Honchel?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Uh, motion carries five to zero with one abstain. Uh, next one's a resolution designating the authorized dispossessing officers and municipal depository board for the City of Belavista for calendar year 2021.
2023, actually.
2023, yeah.
Motion to approve.
Sorry, my mistake.
Second.
That was Mr. Wasniak, second by Doug Fowler.
Council Fowler?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Honchel?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Motion carries six to zero. Next one's a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Wichita Kenworth pursuant to a Sourcewall Cooperative Purchasing Agreement for the purchase of one new production model dump truck with salt spreader and snowplow equipment in the amount of $254,452.
Motion to approve, second.
That was Mr. Wasniak, second by Mr. Wilmes.
I'd always like to say, just for everybody's, you know, I know is that, once again, this was in the 2023 budget, you know, so we've already reviewed this as a city council. So there's not, these are not extra expenditures or anything. They're all accounted for. That's it.
Yeah, and I think we had to wait for about 10 months.
Yeah, yeah.
This has been a long time coming, so... Okay, roll call vote.
Council Wasniak?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Honchel?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Wilmes?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. The next resolution is awarding bid and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract of pinnacle emergency vehicles in amount not to exceed $236,637 for a remount of a 2011 four-by-four Chief XL Bron ambulance for the fire department.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, Chief, can you, does this complete the remount of all of our ambulances now?
It completes all the Yodler models. We have one that will be open in a couple of years that needs to be remounted.
Okay, that's what I think, this is about the third one, I think, since I've been on council.
It is.
You know what, just I'd like to take the opportunity. Last Sunday at the church, we usually go to lunch and things. And I, you know, I'm able to go occasionally. But there is a lady there that, you know, recently lost her husband. And she could not say enough good things about our EMS services. And when they would have to call, make a call for ambulance to come. an ambulance to come out, just meant so much to her. And I just, you know, just recognition of, you know, you, your department, your staff, you know, your EMS members, and I actually had an opportunity to witness them in action. My next-door neighbor had to call an ambulance, and she called me first, you know, and I went over, but you guys arrived while I was there. And just watching, you know, your, your department handle and manage that situation was really awesome. They had no clue who I was as far as a city council member. I mean, they're not putting on any airs, I mean, why would they anyway? It's emergency. But I was just, it was just, it's just really great work, you know, that, that your people do, so, yeah.
Mayor, I don't know if we got on the record a motion or a second on that or not. We'd need to read that again.
I have so many.
The mayor didn't announce it, so.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if I got it. I was gonna ask to make sure Wanda did, so I'm glad she did, but, yeah, I'd like to second what Mr. Snow said. When I was campaigning, I heard nothing but good things about the fire department and the ambulance service and the whole nine yards. I thought it was great, so. So I think we need to have a vote, right?
Right. Council, Wills?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Plinard Construction Management, Inc., for construction management services related to the remodeling of the current police station into an extension of the central fire station at town center and for other improvements to the facility.
Motion to approve.
Second.
That was Mr. Wasniak and Mr. Fowler. Before we vote, I wanted to explain, this is for an upgrade in fire station number one. Particularly, the first part of it is we're gonna upgrade the living quarters for the firemen in there. It's badly overdue, and once the police exit that building, it'll give us an opportunity to work on fixing it up for them. So that's what this is about. So you can go ahead with the roll call vote. Oh, go ahead, Larry.
This is a budgeted item in our capital improvement budgets for 2023 that's been approved, so.
Okay.
Okay. Council, Snow?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
I did Wills twice, I'm sorry.
It's all right. You still sure about it, Larry?
At least you voted the same way both times.
It's a good deal there.
Mayor, would the police department be exiting the building? Do we know?
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be, my understanding is it's gonna be gradual during the months of January and February. Police chief is that, he was asking when you'd be exiting the building.
Well, our IT departments this week starting to get Wi-Fi, everything up and running, and that's gonna take about three weeks, and so there's no use us getting in there prior to it, but the move-in process will really start near the end of the month and probably the first three weeks in February till we're fully moved in.
Thank you.
Looked like they were moving furniture in the day. Well, yeah, so, well, the furniture was delivered, because that was by contract, it was delivered like a month ago, it's been sitting in the training area, and as rooms get ready and punch listed, they are unloading furniture. So that, the new furniture has been delivered, it's being set up as rooms are punch listed.
Okay, thank you. Next resolution is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a ninth amended animal services contract for animal sheltering services with Bella Vista Animal Shelter, Inc.
Motion to approve.
Second.
That's Mr. Wasniak and, what's that?
Craig.
Mr. Hansel. I was gonna explain, this is an amendment changing the amount the city gives the animal shelter from $4,000 a month to $5,000 a month, and we also give them stipend for every dog and cat, which I don't recall exactly what amount that is. So go ahead with the roll call vote.
I guess in recognition of the animal shelter, they do a lot of programs to try and help funding themselves with different fundraisers processes. So it's not only the contract with the city that they earn their money, it is through other activities that the shelter proceeds with.
Yes, they, they do quite a bit of fundraising, so, yeah, they work really hard at that. Go ahead with the roll call.
Council, Wasniak?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Resolution carried six to zero. Meetings and announcements, the next city council work session will be 5:30 p.m. on Tuesday, February 21. It's moved to Tuesday because of President's Day. Next city council regular meeting is 6:30 p.m. Monday, February 27. Planning Commission work session is at 4:30 p.m. Thursday, February 2, and Planning Commission regular meeting, 4:30 p.m. on Tuesday, February 13. So if there's nothing else.
There's another one on the.
Okay. Oh, Board of Construction Appeals is at 3 p.m. Tuesday, February 14, if necessary, at Bella Vista District Court. So if there's nothing else, meetings adjourned. I'd like to thank council for all their hard work and the city clerk. Thank you very much.
Good job. [inaudible]